What's that?
Did you read it yet?
I did not. I believe you're right.
I know that from me, right?
Not the line.
You don't have to admit that. Nobody else likes to go wrong.
I'd like to call this meeting to order verified compliance with open meetings on those cases and drop them to the chairman. Please join me in the quiet.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up on our agenda, we have recommendations. It's always good to start with a great new about our students and we have the Eagle Scout candidates. And Dr. Holt is going to lead this celebration for our students.
Well, it looks like we have one of our candidates here, because I remember being with him. Something like that. So, um, I forgot your first name. Kevin. Do you want to step up and share with everybody the project you have for your Eagle project that you're working on?
Have the microphone?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Evan McIntosh. I am a senior here at Whitelands High School. And as part of my Eagle project, what I did, excuse me, was I went around to the schools and I asked for donations for welcome baskets at the Ronald McDonald House on Watertown Plank Road, right across from Children's Hospital. And what these items would go for is welcome baskets for families. And what would be done with them is they would be given to families when they arrive at the house. And it contains a various assortment of toiletry items such as toothbrushes, toothpaste, deodorant, and shampoos. And this would be given to the families, like I said, when they arrive there. And it's just a nice little gift of, here you go. We know that you might not have the necessary things that you need to stay here, but here's just a couple of things to help get you on your way. And I thought this was a great idea because they were undergoing an expansion and they were adding a total of thirty-six new short-term rooms. And I was then aiming for thirty-six bags. I only got thirty-one bags, however, I got quite the mountain of extras that I also donated along with that. And I also had my Court of Honor yesterday, and I asked people to bring donations again. And along with those donations, I now have more than enough to complete the extra five bags and have still a surplus of extra items to donate to the house.
Ellen, did you get to tour the, were you in the Ronald McDonald House?
Yes, I did get to tour it.
What was your reaction to that?
I had never been that deep into a Ronald McDonald House, like looking around, but it was quite the house. There was four three levels that families could live on. And on each level, they had two giant kitchens with three or four stoves that the families could go to on any night and cook whatever they wanted. And the representative that I talked with said that there was one time where people from Thailand came and they stayed there for long term. And she said that almost every night, the kitchen smelled of wonderful Taiwanese food. Every room is just a, almost like a small hotel room. There's a queen-sized bed with a pull-out bed or two, a small personal refrigerator for the families, a bathroom, a full bathroom, I might add. And a couple of dressers, just a basic room that the families might need for their two-week stay with their children who are right across the road. They also have various rooms that the children can play in and even some for the parents to relax in while their children are playing. There's also a very large grand piano and the fireplace in the house. And then also down in the basement, they have some electronic entertainment rooms and even a fitness center for the people when they stay there.
What kind of skills, skills would they add to your job?
Probably one of them was leading a large group or planning out many events. Like, one of my friends had his Eagle project, and I know it doesn't really make a difference, but he only had two sessions for his Eagle project, whereas I had more like five or six. So, I had to really pull together more scouts and plan out more sessions, essentially. So, I think planning was a very large thing that I learned and can't really do things like this in high hopes.
That's great. Thank you, congratulations. Any other? Thank you again for your two states. The work that you did for families that are in trouble and children, that's just great. All right, thank you, Ellen.
I probably should never recall Evan coming again. I'll just read the names of the other kids. And I know Tyler, that Mike has some knowledge of what his project was. Remember Tyler Cruz?
Tyler Cruz's project he did last summer, he built two planter boxes for the seed residences at the Salvation Army in Old Creek. So, the residents there can go out and plant their vegetables and grow them or whatnot. So, I helped, being an adult committee member with his troops, so, you know, I helped him with this project. And so, you know, that was, that was a good one to work on.
We also wanted to mention Ethan Pericke, Peter Hassan, Redden Cardenas. And they just couldn't be here tonight, but we sure appreciate the things they do in our community and getting those skills by doing those presentations that you did. So, I mean, it's pretty impressive when they come in, meet with the teachers, the superintendent, do their presentations to promote their projects, so.
Thank you. Next up, we have comments from the audience regarding agenda items. We have a couple of needs you didn't know, we have the two different steps here. So, the first one is related to agenda items, the second one, we wanted to be related to post-referendum follow-up. So, we'll start with the first one. We would take comments from the audience regarding agenda items. We ask that you state your name and address for the record and that you limit your comments to five minutes. Would anyone like to address the board on issues that are on the agenda tonight, saving the referendum comments? Anyone like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move right to public comments on post-referendum follow-up. Again, we're going to have that same rule, we're asking that you state your name and address for the record and that you limit your comments to five minutes. Probably going to be hard and fast on that one. Because we, the board really wants to listen to your concerns, to your suggestions. We want to move forward with something, these issues are still in need in our district, and we will be discussing that later. I also want to mention, this is not the only time that we're going to listen. What we really wanted to offer this to the community is a starting point. And then the board will later on in this meeting go into more of an informal workshop court type of discussion ourselves, what we think. So, would anyone like to address the board at this time on the post-referendum follow-up discussion? We appreciate your comments. There's going to be no discussion at this time, but again, we're looking forward to hearing that. So, who would like to, who would like to come first?
Please, Ellen Rich. This is one of the two superiors that is here. Just wanted to say that I really appreciate all the information that the district put out in regards to this referendum. I spoke with a lot of families and other village members who were very appreciative to get all of that information as well. I felt that it was very helpful and informative. I am sad that the referendum did not pass, but I think that it still gives us an opportunity for more discussion and hopefully get more of the community involved. Get more opinions, see if people find a way to make this happen. The school still needs the updates. The high school needs the pool fixed, needs the locker rooms attended to. The elementary school absolutely has a number of things that need attention. And I think this is an opportunity for us to figure out a way that we can bring the whole community together and I think the issue's resolved.
Thank you.
I'm Eagle Lightest, ninety-one sixty while Florida report, Hills Corners. And I wanted to share some of the texts and Facebook messages I receive from people that I think the board should recognize and hear as they go forward, trying to figure out what plan these are going to be. Here's a quote from someone. "I worry about my property values, but we can't even keep up with maintenance in our high school. And then taxpayers think it's okay, and facilities cannot be used for their intended purposes. Being cheap is not always the answer. Families will look elsewhere for districts that keep up their property." There's another one. "I was in eighth grade at Whitelands, no middle school was even built yet when the pool was built. Pool is forty-seven years old. How can the general public think that it doesn't need upgrading? This is not a retirement community." It was also brought to my attention that members who worked against the referendum were also in the committee to build the Fountain Field, which was also known as the water retention plan, in order to address the need of the high school track, which was often not usable and the district did not pose home needs. Why didn't F. L. S. U. carry over to bringing the pool up to WIA standards to allow for competitive use? "Our community is only as good as the upkeep of our park, libraries, and schools. It is why we chose Hills Corners twenty-five years ago. I'm disappointed." We took a big hit today with these, those referendums. The safety of our children isn't important to people anymore? Did the pool even get voted down? That's crazy. What are people thinking? I thought all young people would get out there and vote for the schools that needed to be updated. These are just a sample of some of the, of the feedback that I've received. So, I just thought it was very important that the board had her view to say some of the information I have. As a resident, I urge the Hills Corners Village Board, the City of Greenfield leaders, Whitelands School Board, and the district residents to consider the number of young, school-age families that voted yes for this, to update facilities. If this area wants to continue to attract young families, then residents need to invest in our aging facilities. We may not be able to say yes to everything, but we can't keep saying no to everything. Our referendums are not the first referendums that were voted down. The referendums did open up public discussions about some capital improvement needs, even though there was disagreement as to what the community would support at this time. Net one in Port Washington passed capital improvement referendums on April seventh, so I am confident a future plan will be supported by the district residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Good evening. My name is Tom Jutowski. I live at four eight zero one, South Miami Forest Street, Greenfield. I guess my concern with the referendum issue is the fact how it was handled administratively. And, you know, I came to a number of your hearings, your sessions, I went and looked at school. I attended the Whitelands School system, my brothers and sisters attended, my brother was the first graduate class, the whole nine yards. My problem is with, when I made a request for information, and my information request just came back to me with a rather sour taste in my mouth. I wasn't elected officially in Greenfield for twelve years, and I've had a lot of challenges trying to get transparency in government and to keep my constituency informed. And when I talked to the city clerk, you know, I went over and found out with, you know, open records requests and things like that, nature. But the city, I, the departments were really upset about getting open records requests. Or, because I was always accused of, well, the constituents coming, you're giving it to your constituents. You're damn right I'm giving it to my constituents. I'll make a copy and I'll hand it over to you. And there was not that big a call for people with real open records requests. My problem here is that when I got a copy back from the superintendent here, are we required to search all this information? You know, and that's irrespective, but this is part that really bothered me. Open request records are related to information that we have. And then here's, here's a question. Are we doing the work for someone who wants to use this information in opposition to proposed referendum? I don't know how to respond to that. I don't know how to, it really gave me a dovetailing feeling to think that somebody, it made me feel like this is an inferior group up here that is just non-responsive. You know, transparency. Of course, we need upgrades in certain things with this facility. But when I'm, I'm given pictures like this showing plywood in place of panels and in windows and things of that are leaking and are disrepair, I think of myself at home, and I see my side evolving up. What am I doing with this society? See my windows, the windows. These issues are nothing new. These things have been in the pipeline for an so long a time. And what really bothers me is when we spend money on a football field. I mean, my home, it's the same as me going out in the tennis court in my backyard with my house falling apart. It's like, I don't think anybody here owns homes or what? It just gives me a, you know, I don't know. I guess, a little bit frustrating. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Some good suggestions there. Other ideas? Anyone like to come and speak to the board? Directions for the board at this time? Seeing none, then we'll move to our next agenda item, which is going to be committee reports. Okay, we have, any committee reports this evening, personnel? My name's Episodi, yeah.
We met March sixteenth, and we talked about the OPEP study, the finance committee of our board that we approved in OPEP study. I don't know when that's going to be on the agenda. The revenue limit projections for the state budget, if they're approved, we're going to have a reduction of four hundred thousand in the revenue limit. And the projected per pupil amount for twenty sixteen, seventeen may remain intact, but, you know, the budget is still in its approval stages for the state, so we don't know what to turn about, what's going to be. We talked about the salary limitation for one point six two percent. And we also talked about bringing up teacher salaries that are below a threshold up to a higher minimum. The compensation committee is going to be continuing to discuss that. Property insurance for the district may not be offered by the state anymore, again, as part of the state budget. Rather offered in the open market, we'll have to go through a bid process for that. The current general fund balance might be lowered by about three hundred thousand in our current expenses if the current budget projection remains steady. But again, we've got a couple months left. The budget for the Bridges Math Program is reviewed. Administration is looking at the current expenses for every advanced program to see how your expenses may offset the new program expenses. Of course, that was already covered. We also discussed the restaurants at the high school auditorium and what might be done for that temporarily, better signage when we have a public event, to, like, to, and eighty-eight people in the bathroom for their use. Long term, having the facilities used, spending to find a better solution. The Edgerton parking lot is on track. Health insurance carrier bids, we're also looking at those at the time this was happening, offices weren't being yet. And maybe we'll get the joint personnel finance committee to look at those. And that is pretty much our evening.
Is there any other things?
I'm sorry, March twentieth, next month, we, sorry, March twentieth, April twentieth, all right.
Next up is superintendent's report.
I have a couple of fun items to report on. I'm sure it doesn't come as any surprise to our board members or hundreds of people who saw the High School Musical, but the recent performance of Once on This Island was nominated for twenty-two Tommy Awards. That is one more than a record-setting year just twelve short months ago. So, last year, we were really happy, this year, well-deserved congratulations to director Tom Weissgruber and his incredible cast and crew. Success leads to more success when it comes to performing arts opportunities in a school district. On April thirtieth and May first, the middle school students will be performing Shrek musical junior at the high school. Let's see. And soon thereafter, for four nights in May, our Edgerton Elementary School, fourth and fifth graders will be doing the Lion King Junior. They're both very challenging but ambitious plays, but I know they'll be outstanding and well worth the time to enjoy with a family. Former Whitelands teacher and author Sandy Grell was at Hills Corners in Edgerton for the Artist in Residence programs. It was a lot of fun for the kids as she shares her insights and wisdom about the writing process, and it's a great learning experience that the kids really enjoy. The transition to middle school event, we had a great turnout of fifth graders and their parents for the evening. Transition to middle school tours, they were recently hosted by our middle school teachers and administration. I heard many positive comments from parents and students about this opportunity to see what the future holds for our fifth graders. Speaking of middle school events, in our private meeting tonight, we were talking about whether we could say verse for these chaperones that are going. But speaking of the fun events, our students are participating in the eighth grade field trip to Washington, D.C., leave tomorrow. It's always a very fun and educational trip that our students look forward to throughout their middle school career. And meanwhile, our seventh graders are getting ready for their trip later in May in New York City. So, Teresa Kubenek and Mary, I think her last, Cleveland. Are the two named chaperones. And we're hoping that they have so much fun, they're up for it again next week. That conclusionary part.
Thank you. Next up, we will have comments from the school board regarding items, agenda items for future consideration.
I'd like to have the public comments on the referendum on at least a monthly basis on the agenda. If we chose, sort of choose to move forward, whatever our plan is, I think it should be under.
Figure out what can be part of our discussion to end. All right, what else? Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move to board member announcements.
I'd like to thank, Jackie, can you help me with Adriana's last name?
Orly.
The new name?
Razika, I'm sorry.
Razika. And her husband took nine of our high school students to Ecuador. And everybody had a great time, a lot of learning. There is a blog and pictures to be found somewhere on the website, right? Is it on our website?
I don't think it's on our website. It must have done something.
There's a link, there's a link to it on the front page.
There's a link to it?
Yeah, on the front page of the high school site.
And everybody got home safe, and it was a very good fun and learning experience. And piggyback on Dr. Holt, the kids are getting up at three forty-five a.m. tomorrow morning to go to Washington, D.C. So, and I understand the cherry blossoms are in full bloom. And I also like to thank Eileen for being an awesome school board member and coming together. And I know your motives are only for the kids and community and moving on.
Any other comments from the board or board announcements? I'd like to thank everyone for your support during the difficult time. When they say, in my life, that's in the family, that Whitelands is a family, I sure experienced that this week, so, thank you all very much.
I should probably give a plug here for Fountain Fest, too.
Oh, yes.
April twenty-fifth, and details are on the website.
Very good, you know that. And we have May second is the Spring Academy for WASB. So, if any board members would like to go, please let Kathy help, as soon as you can. I invite Kathy, one of the board members, to come to that. Jackie?
Oh, I just wanted to say that Natalia July also took a group of students to France over break, and they also had an excellent trip, so, they had lots of people out and about.
All right, thank you. I'm going to take a motion to adjourn into close slash.
Actually, no.
You do.
We actually don't need that because the issue is resolved.
All right, and we will move into post-referendum discussion, correct? We don't need to adjourn or. Well, we have a ton of questions that Dr. Holt and I have thought through, and we think need to be answered, not all of them tonight. But we wanted to start first with ourselves, just sort of talking about what we think happened. And then ultimately, the goal is to figure out, as was mentioned tonight, how can we move forward with these issues that face the district, with our community? So, that's, that's our goal. I do want to summarize what I thought I heard in the people coming forward that was that we need to involve more people, that we need to bring people together, that there should be transparency, that information should be shared regardless of who you are, and that we have to be very careful about that. And that we should think about our priorities, and that's always tough to figure out sometimes because we never, we can't just take a whole list of things we need to do and fix them all at once. So, we will, we will have, by involving more people, from what I hear tonight, I think we can get a better sense of not just what we think the priorities are, but what the community thinks the priorities are and how can we find what and at what time. So, who would like to lead us off here in some comments? Will, I think I'd like the board to speak first, and then we can entertain more comments from the audience if you'd like to talk. And share with us what you think some of the comments might have. All right, who wants to start off with some discussion about?
I'm in touch with a lot of parents, a lot of parents. And it, being a very conservative, very conservative area, I was surprised at the emails I got as well before and after the referendum that it didn't pass. And I think it's, I think we're too small a community to have a vigorous no group against the referendum. I think that there was a lot of things going against. It's very easy to vote no. If I don't know anything, and I walk up to the ballot and I see twenty-two billion, eight million, or whatever it was, and five point, whatever it was, how do I vote no? Why do I want my taxes to go up? But I think some of the, I think some of the things that I mean that spoke at the microphone are very true, that I don't want my taxes to go up. But also, I can't sit here and know that we have a pool that is a danger, that someone, someone has to enter through the locker rooms where there are children, possibly dressing, showering, whatever, and we have adults walking through there. possibly dressing, showering, whatever, and we have adults walking through there. There's no public access. So, I don't know how, their information's out there. And to your point, sir, that plywood is part of the construction of the Whittall. The outside piece is gone. I, I don't know how people can say, "We don't need this." So, we have to find a mutual ground with everybody to come forward because the facilities do need it. And it's been known through previous boards as well as this current board that these situations are, are, are here. Uh, maybe we don't need to do it to extent, I don't know. But I also know, we had plenty of meetings, open meetings on the agenda where people from both sides came to this meeting and talked both ways. So, to say that it wasn't, uh, clearly stated that we had these open meetings, I, I don't believe that to be true. We did. So, I, I believe we have to listen to what everybody has to say. And I, I think we need to get over, we need to, I think we need to leave what happened in the past, past and move forward from here forward. How do we get this done? So, I got.
Okay, Stephanie. As we have said, we need to honor what our public tells us. We went out in the most public way of putting in a ballot. And our taxpayers told us that this is not something we want. In fact, I was hearing comments while we were making a line to vote, that people were discussing the referendum. Um, the dollar figure unnerved a lot of people. It just did. And I had people come up to me that were worried about losing their houses. And it, because the taxes were just going to be very difficult for them to reach. And I understand that. For good or for bad, it didn't pass and we still have to listen to what our constituents have told us through the ballot. Now, how we find that kind of ground, that's something that we have to discuss, but we still have to honor what was said because we went out and asked. Just maybe what the answer, none of us were really hoping for. And we still have to find another way. And I, um, say this right now, I personally don't believe the other way is going right to our front again the next year. I, I'm not comfortable with, with being out there unless it's vastly different than what we asked this person. I just, I would be uncomfortable going to our front again immediately after I've gone through this experience.
You don't feel like? I just have something to say. I don't want to really rehash about what we thought we did right or what we did wrong or why it failed or why people didn't vote for it, people didn't vote for it. But the thing is, is that these are public schools and the public has to support the schools. So, they either support the schools by referendum or they support the schools by taxes. We have a lot of needs in the district. The two things that were on the referendum were only two things in this district. We get cut from the state funding. The only other way we have money is through taxes. So, we need to figure out with our community what they are willing to pay for, how much they're willing to pay. Because I don't want my taxes going up, but I don't want my property value going down. So, we need to figure it out somehow. So, we need to work together and figure the money.
Well, I guess, um, some of the things that I, I had heard is it really wasn't too much at once. Um, and I know that, I know what we brought forward was, was big. It was, you know, it was kind of a comprehensive, long-term approach. It really, I mean, it really was, you know, because we had a lot of discussions about, did it make sense to put money into part of a building that was, you know, really old? And, um, but, um, it's too much, you know? That dollar amount was, it was too much that, that we could support, that, you know, the community was supporting at this point in time. So, um, that was, you know, that's one of the messages obviously that we need to take away. And I agree, we have to find out, well, what, you know, I don't know, what is, you know, what can the community support? Um, and I guess the Band-Aid approach thing again. So, um, the other lesson I think we can learn and, and I'm partially responsible for this is over the past three years, um, we were the good guys, you know? And we kept our levies low, we didn't levy to the max. And so, I guess figured that over, you know, because people would say, "Well, isn't there another way to fund some of this stuff?" And it's like, well, I guess we, we could have levied to the max and we left one point six million dollars on the table the last three years being a good guy. So, if we're not going to get the support, like when we go out to referendum, then we're going to have to at least start chipping away at stuff, um, by looking at how we levy and, um, you know, and I'm partially responsible for those, those sort of votes that kind of didn't help us there. So, that's it.
No, you.
So, Mr. Pajdrowski, you asked why some of these projects haven't been done in the past, some of them for maintenance, why it wasn't done? That's a very good question. It's one that some of us can't answer because we weren't on board at the time. Could it have been done, should have been done? Maybe. Um, what we're dealing with now is a situation where it needs to be done. Something needs to be done, whether it's a short maintenance, upkeep, whatever it is, we need to make a decision. And to put it on the back burner for another year, two years, five years, whatever it is, we're going to be in an even bigger situation when that, uh, is it, was it an aggressive, open-minded, innovative plan? Absolutely. But these aren't new ideas, these aren't new concepts, these aren't new problems. They've been growing over time, the pool, uh, the locker rooms across the board. Where, I mean, I, the fact that in an age where you have situations that we see on news every day where there's abuse of children, the fact that nothing has happened in those locker rooms to this point is astonishing. Am I saying something's going to happen? No. But that's, I mean, it just doesn't make sense to have that that way. And the fact that nobody stepped up and said, "This needs to be fixed, there should be a better way." I, I can't believe that hasn't happened yet. We here, I mean, I remember when I was doing my initial debate. The first question was, what do you think about putting air conditioning in the high school gymnasium? I mean, that's, that's the concern, that was the most prominent concern, air conditioning in the high school. That along with the pool were in the same question. That failed sixty-five thirty, right? So, if our priority is air conditioning in the school because one day a year on graduation it's hot and that fails, what else are we doing? I mean, what, what kind of environment are we creating? You know, my son goes from one classroom where he needs a jacket to the next where he needs a tank top. My other son is at HCE right now where there's no ventilation in his classroom. So, in the summer it's hot and he has to have box fans to try to keep him cooled off. I mean, that's what we're dealing with. But the concern is for graduation, it's hot for an outdoor gymnasium. And then that doesn't pass. So, I think as a community, we need to say, okay, we want property values that are continuing to rise. We don't want high taxes. Okay, Nancy hit it, we all said it. Income from the state is declining every year. We're going to be in a situation where if we don't tax, we're not going to be able to support what we have now. So, that means cutting programs, that means budget, or that means going to referendum to try to get money to sustain ourselves. Or borrowing, not to, for short term, but borrowing just to pay our normal expenses. That's what we're looking at in the next two to three years. We need to work together. We should have been working together all along. I don't know why we're, it doesn't matter. We need to work together. This is your community. It's not about us pushing our agenda, it's about, we took a survey, however you want to look at the survey, we took a survey. Based on what the community that just took the time to respond and said, we supported that decision. That's what we went with. It wasn't our choice, it was what the community said. That's what we went with. If that doesn't represent the full community, it's up to the people that didn't vote or don't feel it's representative to sneak up and say, "This is what we need to do." And that could have been last fall so that all this time we were making a plan together. Even if it was to say, you know what, we can't go to referendum yet, but we need more time as a group to look at it. Let's do it next year. Let's do it in the fall, whatever it is. We had that chance, we missed it. It's up to all of us collectively to work together to say, this is our decision going forward. And to get emails where it's like a parade that, hey, you lost. I didn't lose anything, kids lost. It wasn't me, it was what the survey said, and that's what we did. So, to do a celebration lap, my kids aren't going to go through, by, by the time the school opened, my boys would be out of HCE. I'm not doing it because I want them to experience it. I'm doing it because I don't want the next generation of kids to go through what my kids go through today. And the same thing at the pool. I think there's a better way to do it and some changes need to happen. It's about how we use that money to do that.
Alright. Thank you. I, my, I'll all add is that, I guess I agree with much of what's been said. And that we still have these challenges that we see, that the board sees need to be fixed. We see it, we think these are important things to our kids. I think we have to start that, sort of back up and agree on the issue before we even get into solutions this time. That's what I would suggest we do. And you can, and I also, my suggestion is that we, we use a different process. That's all I heard from the start is we did the rolling process. So, I'm totally open to, we have our normal board meetings and we have our committees. But I'm totally open, let's, let's either expand our committee to, to, to community members or we can have the community group just join and say, you know, we're going to work with the district and come up with solutions. But we first have to agree on what to be valued in this community, what do we want in each of these situations for our, for our kids and for our community. Because it really never was totally, we recognize that if we're going to have a strong community, and I know all of us feel that way, we need to have strong schools. So, what does strong mean? What are good schools? What do we want to fix and when? But first we have to agree whether or not we even value these things. And so, we take the pool as an example, do we value the pool? Do we value that as important as, um, when the back said, you know, I don't know. We thought, we put out what we thought was important based on what we hear from people. There have been complaints all along about that gym, there have been complaints all along about that pool. And, you know, that's why we decided, but we do need, I think, a stronger process that involves more people in needing flow. So, um, the question on the table then for the board is how can we do it different? I don't think we're anywhere near thinking about a year. I think we're just right here, right now, living in the moment and saying, and by you all came, we want to work, we want to work as a team, as a Whittall family with our community to resolve these issues. So, can you think of anything else? That I would like, oh, I did want to mention, you know, what I reflected on, what influenced me to make the decisions personally that we made to move to this bold step and I mean, I a year ago would have never dreamed we would have done this, went out for a new school. But one of the things that did help me a lot was when we toured the new school and we really did look at what are they doing with schools now and why? And so, a couple of us got to go tour one of the new schools. I strongly recommend that we do that with community members this time. And we, then we look in one-on-one, because I got criticized for, "Oh, you won, what are they doing here, here and here?" You know, we can broaden that, we can look at more schools, but not until, that's into the solution phase, not as in we agreed that we need to do something with HCE. And then if everyone agrees to that, then we can move to that phase. We've got our facilities, I think our committee can continue to, uh, work with that and, and, you know, look at the long list of things that we're still working on, um, year to year. But, um, I think that's about fine, I'm just here at the moment. So, next up, you would like to hear from our consultants, give them a chance to give us some feedback. And then again, if there's some more audience that would like to talk with us. And then I'd like to sort of move us to, okay, now what? What do we think we need to do? And how do we do it and when? I love the idea of a monthly conversation, keeping the conversation going. I totally think that's a great idea. I'm not sure it should just be a public forum, because we have those all the time. But I think we should find a way to connect on a regular basis till we figure out what we need to do. And in an open session, I mean, I mean, an open session, but I mean, a regular board meeting doesn't always bring people in. So, if there are another way, we can still have additional open meetings that are really more conversational.
So. I just wanted to point out that at the financing facilities meetings, they are, they, they have been set up as conversational. We had, when people come in, we had, um, well, when the Edgerton parking lot, you know, was a concern, parents came in. So, I guess you could either, whatever, however you guys decide to do it, you can set up as a separate approach or just remind people that the financing facility meetings are open to the public and they are more communicative, uh, conversation type of format than what we have here.
We could. Okay, well, although, you get to talk, I'm sorry. You get to share your concern, your thoughts on this referendum process.
I thought it was all well-stated. The, the community's fault. Our job, and, and the reason you, Stephanie, like you said, the reason we put it out there is because, you know, we went with what, that we thought the direction was from the survey. That was the only information we had coming in and that's what we made your decision on. Obviously, there's other ways to do things and, um, the process is one of them. And the discussion that I've heard tonight, I put tons of notes because I type a lot faster than I write. But basically, we need to be a little bit more open and, and get some of that community feedback and try to come up with another, uh, process to move the, the needs forward to the community. One that we are a little bit more confident that we won't have, um, people opposing it when we finally bring it back to the public for a vote. So, you know, forming that, that committee, um, where we have community members, um, you know, district representatives, board members, but we really focus on analyzing what they, their needs actually are. And then once we identify those needs, everybody agrees what the needs are. And I did hear a lot of people saying, "There's not needs." I think they disagreed on what the, the way to address that one. So, my thought is we go back to the drawing board and start like you said. Identify the needs, make sure that everybody knows what those are. And then, um, working with the community to figure out what's the solution that the community will support. Because like everybody said, that's what this is, this is a community school, that's a strength of the school. So, if we don't have our community behind us, it's spinning wheels.
I'm going to echo that as well. And if we started off, if we start out and we have people that are opposed to a revenue, it's just not going to go anywhere. So, if we can work together, that's, that's the way to go. And then we have a lot of disagreement over information that was put out. So, I don't know how we come together on all of that. But I, I really hope that we can. And I hope that we can look at how, what sources are we going to use and how are we going to use them to best decide what these kids need? Alright? I just want to mention that.
Do you want anything from Epstein Unit?
Yeah. If Epstein Unit would like to make any comments. We wanted some feedback from experts, we can do this all over.
Wait, put the quotes around my word, please. Well, hi, I'm, behalf of Mark and I am the U.A., obviously we're disappointed for you, we're disappointed in the process.
Come up to the microphone, because otherwise it's not going to be that important.
Thanks.
Get your name and all those things.
Sure, my name is Kit Daly and I'm at Epstein Unit Architects. I just want to say publicly that we're disappointed for the districts and obviously we're looking forward to project moving forward. However, um, we're here to support you as you think about taking next steps. I think all the things that you're saying are right on the money for where you need to be. It's always hard to go through this process and you need a little time to just kind of absorb it and think and listen and respond. And I think the comments about looking for ways to have a, um, a different approach to your process is, is right on as well. And I think there are different strategies that you can use to engage your community along the journey a little more than what, you know, we were able to do in this case. And if your needs evolved as you got into it and the referendum timing came up pretty quickly, we talked about that. And you went for it. And I give you a lot of credit for doing it. And I think you guys worked very hard. I want to publicly acknowledge the work that Dave Cody did as a communications director. I think he cranked out a ton of information in every possible way, um, you could get there. So, I really respect his work and learned a lot from him as well. And I think that as you start thinking about the next steps, I think you said to your point of just taking it slow and not worrying about when the next timeframe is, but going when you're ready. And, you know, I think one of the other advantages you have is that in higher, you're a construction manager now for, for a team. JP Collins on board, the A.A.'s on board, and we can all work together collectively with you to define strategy for different ways. We've worked in a lot of different districts. So, we can bring that to you and, and kind of bring our, all of our lessons learned and try and find ways. and try and find what the brand approaches here in Whitman moving forward. And just taking that one step at a time and confirming your needs. I think working to define a vision for you for facilities would be helpful. Eventually, some project drivers that you can measure your options against, so that you have a framework. Um, and those are things that could be developed with the community and a community-based committee process. And so there are different strategies for them. So, looking forward to helping you as you feel appropriate moving forward. And just, I guess the last thing I would say is be patient and you'll get there. Your needs are real, I would echo that, what Dr. Holt said. Really didn't hear too much about people thinking your needs weren't valid. It's just, I think, the process and how we got to the solution and the final solution might not have been the right thing. So, here to help you as me. I don't know, Mark, do you have anything else you wanna add to that?
They did very well.
Okay.
As usual, she's a hard act to follow, so I agree. Kevin Hickman with Chief of Health. As you know, uh, we came aboard fairly late in the process, but we tried to provide as many values as we possibly could. And I'll echo what Kit said. Every single person we worked with at the district administration, in fact, everybody in the community we worked with gave it their all. Dave, Dave Cody, um, just a class act. Everything we asked him to do, he went a hundred percent. I like what Kit said, having the advantage right now of having both our firms on board. Uh, it's not gonna be a two-step, four-step, nine-step scenario. You're gonna be able to go forward and have all the information you need. Add your fingertips to make the decisions you need on time and basis. The other advantage, uh, I think this can be critical right now is gonna be, we weren't able to really bring you all the options and scenarios we normally would be, um, in a scenario that, where we have some time to work with you. So, um, I think the point that a few of your folks made that I reinforce is you have a unique opportunity right now that, um, you can really take advantage of that. There were some folks, obviously, that, um, had some disagreements in the community about the approaches you took. Uh, and that was a great opportunity to get those folks engaged, involved, take advantage of those opinions. And frankly, while it was probably a great idea, it's really a feeling that now, not half the half the feeling of, we've got that date in mind and we gotta go get some decisions on this. So, um, that would be my feedback and looking forward to continuing to support the district.
All right. Um, we have to define what we're gonna do next in the past. Can we just give our finance committee some directions and let you run with this? That's for now, work. We, my managers have kind of forgotten. Do you have some comments for us? Do you wanna, we, we say that, and then you can give us final.
I think it's appropriate to keep it very well decided where we're going. E G Harrison, ninety-seven ten West Park Avenue. Hello, it's been a while. My comment's gonna be, uh, relatively brief. Mr. Shaw and I were one of the founding members of, uh, WTF. We've gone through this entire process. Years. The difference between this project and your referendum and the water management facilities project that we built was the fact that we didn't use surveys, we did not use what we thought was best. We already had community approaching us. So when it came to them approaching us, it was an easy sell to the board. Here, it was the other way around. So the surveys that you put out, the questions you may have asked by this meeting that you may have had, the community that I'm still in touch with were adamantly opposed. The approach, not from the standpoint, everybody on the committee wants these Whitman better. It was never negative, of like, doing something better for our school district. It's the way it was done. You can, and this is determined to give this to you as a treasurer, being in that position for years. Your goal and your focus is to understand the financing of education. There are a lot of projects you guys can accomplish now, over the next three to five years, that will fall within the operational budget. As, when I left, I tried to explain that process. You can, and then you can also allocate money every year to put your capital projects fund. You can do that, over the course of the next four, five, or 10 years, you'll have some money established to be able to do the bigger projects. So example, it's the windows on a high school. You have more than enough money to accomplish that project now. That would've been one thing less that could've been in a referendum. So your dollars would've been less. You could have then in turn listened to the community members. And again, being on the board for nine years, it's very difficult for people to show up to these meetings. We're all aware of that. None of us ever thought it was easy. But we did have them show up when it came to important issues. When you were a spearhead on the Edgerton parking lot, you had people show up and people got behind that project. That was the difference between then and now. So this project, the value, the volume that you chose to do, is where people said, whoa, 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 we're done. Already taxed enough in this district. We're one of the highest taxed districts. And everybody knows that, but everybody wants great quality schools. I, I've sat in these committee meetings with people. And the voice of, you still have to spend money on education. You still have to spend money on facilities. But the extent that you did is what shut it all off. So you can use your surveys, and I know you did a survey. I responded to the survey. You can frame a question any way you want to get the answer you're looking for. And that's what people saw and understood. They understand all of that. So you need to get people here through your contacts to say what is important. And on behalf of the major facility project we did, they approached us. Nancy, you were part of that? And they approached us, we didn't go seeking them. They came to us. And when I say us, I meant the us as the board said. This is where you need to refocus what you're trying to accomplish. You can do a lot of these projects over the course of the next five, 10 years, operation versus capital project. You also have to redefine how you're looking at your financing of the school district. I have yet to see anything that shows that we're taking full advantage of Act Ten. We're not doing that. So there is a lot of money left on the table that could be brought into the equation, keeping the tax levy the same. It's how we reallocate it. And you can, as a board, take funds from Fund Forty to Fund Forty-One every year. So if you can reduce your operating expenditures without lowering the levy, I don't think anybody's here saying, cut the levy or cut the taxes that we pay. Don't raise them. Like if you take full advantage of Act Ten, you'll be able, over the course of the next five to 10 years, because your goal is not to be today. Your goal is supposed to be visionary. You're supposed to see five, 10, and 20 years down the road. That's the focus of a board. It's what we hired the administration to be day-to-day. So you should be able to take full advantage of everything that's available to you, to start allocating. Because nobody wants to see our schools going to ruin. Because all of us love the fact of our property values. In the last recession, we didn't drop that much. We all, everybody around, but we helped consistently. Now that we're coming around, we're starting to see that up again. That's the value of Whitman versus a Greendale or a Greenfield, right, districts surrounding us. So again, refocus what your direction is into, if you're supposed to be visionary. You're not supposed to be today. Your goal is tomorrow. Have this community, you do have a bunch of the WTF that are willing to help.
What do you have to stand for?
Whitman Taxpayer Federation. What were you thinking? The name thing I don't think the first time I saw it. That was not my name, but no. But the idea, the concept behind it is really the same concept that was behind the building of the facility we just accomplished. Was that it was the taxpayers that came to us. And again, us, it was four to five of us at one time that they approached. This is where I think you have a benefit, because you do have an act. It may not look like it, but this is a lot of people from all the years that we sat here, where there's just one or two of us in the audience. There's a lot of people. So this was a major reaction. And I hope it sent the message. It really did. I was like, because I've always been happy to have this school district. Wouldn't have spent nine years of my life dedicated to the process if I didn't care. But what happened for the last year got them in arms. And obviously, by the numbers compared to your survey showed reality. Survey is one thing, vote is total another. I hope that sent the message that your job is to be visionary, it's supposed to be down the road. Allow the administration to give you what they need and try to make that budget work. Utilize all aspects of Act Ten. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'm just gonna summarize that then, because I heard you say.
Be careful, I wanna hear that.
Exactly. Because we wanna get it right. Do it out of your idea. And I'm assuming you're speaking for the group. Do it out of operating. We need to save for future projects. We need to, in the process, also continue to levy, keep the tax levy the same, and find ways using Act Ten, which controls employees, spending on our employees. Control that dollar, find ways to save money through Act Ten, where we don't have to pay benefits and we have more control over teacher salaries, correct? That's what Act Ten's about.
That's part of it.
And so change part of it, in addition to other things. But, so if we can do that, we should be able to, in the next five to 10 years, resolve these issues without referendum.
Right.
You're saying that's what this, what you can, and the Whitman Taxpayer Federation will support that and will work with us doing it.
Well, it's an example.
Right?
If I'm speaking. First of all, I didn't hear him say chop taxes. He didn't say.
He said using Act Ten.
You used the word eliminate. He didn't say eliminate.
No, I didn't say eliminate.
Said using.
Let's clarify. Using the tools available in Act Ten, which I just wanted to clarify, are about, you can save money through different, it's all about employees. That's all I want to mention.
A lot of expenses.
Expenses for employees, correct?
Act Ten is not just about expenses for employees. Act Ten is allowing you, as the board of education, the freedom and the ability now to set your budgets.
Let's get clear on that.
Well, be very clear, because prior to Act Ten, we couldn't control all the fifteen percent of our budget.
So did I get it right? That's what you said.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments from that you would like to add to that moving forward?
No, I'm good.
Any other comments for the board, yes?
Hi, Jennifer Charbitt, Sierra River, that one zero three four five West Fountree Circle. And, um, it was helpful to hear your consultant speak because I was, one of the questions I had was, when did you really start, um, more, you've been thinking about it, clearly it's been some issues for a while. But when, at what point did you sort of really more heavily lean into it? And, um, so that kind of answered that question that I had, because I felt like I, I'm clearly, I'm a parent in the district. I have to sit with my seven-year-old. But I, one of the questions I had was really wondering how much, how much, how many opportunities you had to really be listening to people? And I recognize that because you're a public board, you're constrained by some things. But one of the things that occurred to me sitting here was maybe an opportunity for more listening sessions and ones that don't necessarily take place in this room. Ones where you go out, where whatever, whatever legal constraints you're under, that you are able to have, I don't know if you can do coffee, coffee, you know, coffee, if somebody in their home, or have a group of, a house party, in the equivalent of a house party, where people can come in and you can hear expressing smaller groups and have people be able to ask the stupid question, or be able to ask a more risky question, rather than a more public forum like this. So I, those things came to mind for me in terms of how my, how about we be able to work together moving ahead? So, um, thank you for taking the risk, and I look forward to seeing what happens then.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right. Another, we should listen more, and I totally think that I would agree with her. We should go out and maybe discuss this at the committee level with how we do it.
Tom Kishaw, forty-one, south nine and four. I'm curious, what is your outstanding debt at this particular time?
Three hundred fifty-five dollars, I think it is.
Oh, that's relatively low.
That's a, that's a, uh, interest loan, I believe.
Edge.
Yep. Those value.
How much was it?
Three hundred fifty-five dollars, I believe.
Sure. Okay. I, I think one of the other outstanding components of this referendum is, when I look at the tax bill, there's multiple taxing entities on that bill. And when you see that the school is the highest taxing entity there, uh, it kind of sets, uh, a lot of people wondering. I mean, municipal tax, you can see the snowpaws, the policemen, and all the other items that are there, that your taxes are being paid for. And I think it's a real deficiency as a result of being a school board, not to be able to show your wares in the public. You have to go through facilities like this with, uh, having voice outs and championing other causes with, you know, people wanting to go to these kind of places as well, which is, which is really good. I wish that those things were available the day that I was going to school. It just seems like, uh, you know, I, one of the thoughts that came to my mind with this election and most elections is voter apathy. And, you know, it's really hard to get people engaged in, in local politics, whether it's school boards or, or city business or village business, whatever the case may be. But I see one of the problems with, uh, school districts is the fact that you're similar to village boards with trustees, where you're, uh, representing, uh, each individual on the board is representing the whole of the community or the school, or whatever the case may be. And really, that's a really challenge for people to go out and campaign. Because when I initially campaigned, I went to every door in my district. And that was, it's quite a number of people, but that's a real way to make contact and find out what the people are really thinking.
I think our facility committee should do that, go to the door.
I mean, it really, it's, it's a real challenge, but it, it really provides members to really know what the community is thinking then. And you're in a deficit as a result of that.
Speaking of, just speaking of. No, I appreciate that.
Nobody here represents a particular district. I mean, you have.
I didn't mean to make light of that. But we do need more, we need more connections like that, I really.
And the other problem that I see, uh, you know, I'm watching Greendale go through all of their headaches trying to, uh, come to some type of conclusion to get their project forward. It, it was huge for them as well. I think the biggest problem there, they didn't have the biggest cell like you have here. I mean, you, you have maintenance issues, I mean, the pool and all that, and it's just, I, I, I'm not gonna comment on the rule, but anyway, the other maintenance issues, the windows, the paneling, and all those things. It's not like structural, it's, you know, structural buildings that are signed. You know, you have a platform to work from. But, uh, yeah, I think they need, you know, they need to really know who the people are in your community. It's important for all of you and all of us.
Thank you. All right. Other comments?
I don't think this is on, is it?
It's recording for the.
Oh, I see, okay. Uh, my name is Joan Henderson. I live at six four eighteen, south one, Second Street, and Franklin area, Little School District. And I particularly wanted to ask Jonathan Cable that you didn't want your children, future children, to go through what your children went through at Haynes Corners Elementary. What is that, that's so terrible about that school? Because I toured it, I didn't see it. So explain it to me.
I said about the portion of, with this, with the climate in a classroom. Did we guarantee?
Which one was on the summer?
So we're saying it doesn't give a warning in, in May, April, and May, and that isn't a fault.
I would really rather not get into a way that.
But my, my point was on the context of, the first question in the debate was air conditioning in the gymnasium here. That was, that was my premise, was that people are concerned. That was, that was my premise, was that people are concerned about that when we have children in both schools that are sitting like that every day. That's my concern.
You say the children from Gales Corners Elementary use that big gym?
No, it's in, in their classroom. And if, if the concern is air conditioning in the gymnasium for an hour, once a year, why shouldn't we be concerned about kids? I'm, but I'm saying, that's what we've heard. That was the first question in our candidate form, was that. But when we have kids sitting in similar environments every day, when it's warm, why shouldn't we be concerned about them versus one day in your gymnasium?
Why are we concerned about them? I just don't think that our weather gets that warm in May.
Or that cold.
And I would agree with you.
Cold, that's right.
We need to have that conversation about what do we agree on. I'm not sure we're going to resolve all of that tonight.
If the windows don't open up, replace the windows.
Right.
Open a little bit.
That is for the discussion at-
But the question on the school, totally get all that money, because you don't like it. And that 48 portion, that 1948 portion is only one-third of the school. And it's very seamless, the way it's put together. I thought they did a good job on it. And if worse came to worse, and you were going to have so many children coming into this district, which you're not, that's why you have to have 140 old students in here, then you could always put an L on that building and use the 48 section for all the offices, the teachers and that, even the children living below. I don't see the problem with the school. And it seems to me you just put out a justification of wants rather than a justification of needs. Thank you.
All right. We will leave that into consideration. Other comments?
Can I just make one more subsequent question?
I would like to give these guys a chance first, and then you can come back up. I'll let that go away.
Nope.
No, I can't.
Come on.
Yeah, go ahead.
This was to answer Anderson's point too. It's just like he was talking about into the future. And into the future, public education really seems rather sketchy as far as what our, our state government is doing to public education. I think, you know, there's going to be a tremendous loss in, in funding going other directions than into the public school system. And I think you people up here really have challenges ahead of you that is going to this, because it's going to come down there, sure.
Other comments?
Let me just answer him. I just saw in the paper that Senator Fitzgerald said that they are going to work together to restore the funding for public schools if that's going to be taken out. So the state is looking at that problem, and so that isn't a problem you might fix.
All right. Any other comments?
I move this over here so I can address everyone who's the board. My name is Bernard Shaw. I'm at 10160 Woodmore Court. You've heard the word WTF, yes, I am a member of the Whitwell Taxpayer Federation, as are some other people in the room. And when we got together initially, our model was always the same. Preserve and improve. And that's what our goal was, was to preserve and improve. And we still have that today, and we want to work with the board and the district to take that model and have it come to fruition. So, and in all due respect to the James Dean Ewing and JP Collin and Robert Behr, who's not here, understand, they're, they're in the business to make money. I understand that, okay? But of the almost $30 million that they're going to be spent, $3 million of that would have went for these types of costs, of which you cannot really directly relate to the benefit of the children. And that's really what it is about. But there is no correlation whatsoever between building facilities and student achievement. If that was the case, you would not have seen the achievement that has been achieved in this school district over the last three to five years. And that's attributed to the people that are sitting in that back row and the people that work for them, the teachers. If we were going to invest $30 million, I'd rather invest it in teachers than in facilities. I'm not saying we shouldn't keep our facilities up. We need to do that. But that doesn't mean we have to build monuments or have Mercedes-Benz. We have an all brick block building that's been improved two other times. And if it needs a boiler, that boiler still is working, let's start reserving for it now. Do the operating budget and do a piecemeal. So I think that's an alternative that, that we discussed about a potential subcommittee of the finance committee, as we did with the, with the athletic field and the water treatment program. I think that's a great approach. So let's think about that, and I think we, that group, if that is formed, and we encourage that to be formed, is the solutions group. We're not here today to do that, as Boan Bird indicated. So we don't want this to be adversarial. It never meant to be. Okay, but $30 million from a, one taxing entity, as this gentleman pointed out, is a lot of money. And if you take the other districts that have the ability or the other taxing authorities, and they start piling on, you're talking about tax increases of 40, 50, 60% of your tax bill. Now, I'll give you an example. The Building Hills Corners, of which I'm a member of the CDA, Community Development Authority, it's an estimate to improve the roads in the Building Hills Corners is going to take $23.1 billion. If that referendum passed, on top of this, think of what that would do for you people in Hills Corners, of which I'm obviously a member of. So when we talk about things like forward thinking, that Ms. Bird was integral in trying to, in, in rolling out, we have to be sensitive to the needs of all people within the district, not just the parents of the student that, that attend our school districts. And yes, there is a correlation between the value of your property and good school districts. But there is a crossover, wherein, where if taxes go way too high, your property values go down, they don't go up. So, and this referendum would have crossed that. You may ask why I know that. I don't want to show my resume, but what am I, what I do for a living is I run government banking for the largest banking state in Wisconsin. I'm very proud of that. I'm not here to show you my resume. But there is some credibility, when I say, I deal with 400 school districts and 1,800 municipalities. I see it all. And what I saw going here was, we just went overboard. And now, let's preserve and improve. Let's work together to look at those things that really need to be done. And I don't doubt there is. But last year, when we closed out the books on the Whitwell School District in June 2014, there was a $583,000 surplus. That money goes into Fund 41, which already had about a million more in it. So we're talking a million five to a million six ahead of bounds that would have paid for a lot of the deferred maintenance in cash. That's the kind of fiscal responsibility we need to start exercising in this school district. And we have people that can do that on this board, I'm confident of that. So let's work together, preserve and improve. We will continue with that, with that motto and that goal in mind. So I'm going to ask any member of the board, if you have a question for the Whitwell Taxpayer Federation, because we do have members here that can answer the question.
I'd really like to summarize, though, what, what I heard you say. Should we get this straight? Because, and I also want to tag onto what you had said, John, that we really need to clarify wants versus needs. I mean, that's kind of what I was trying to say when I said, you need to figure out what we value and what we agree on. So what's the difference? I think the committee should really focus on that. I think you're also saying that we need to piecemeal. That's your suggestion, that we work with a subcommittee of the facility committee, and you would be a part of that, you would help with that, to look at what can we do with what and when. Correct?
Let, let me clarify for one moment. If, if you're just going to pay lip service to the subcommittee and, and still, you know, go about, then it's not going to be effective, and we're going to be right back where we were over the last 60 days.
So they have to have a meaningful role, a meaningful voice.
You, you just can't, you just can't, you know, thank you very much for your suggestion and move on. Because that committee is going to be made up of people that have talents, that are willing to take their personal time to devote to this project. I don't think it was, I don't think it was piecemeal specifically what you said, preserve and improve. And I want to set a timeframe.
What you're saying is take a project at a time. Let's not get out of our work.
Well, I want to make sure, because his emphasis was preserve and improve. That is what Mr. Shaw strongly was speaking about, preserve and improve.
But let me go back to finishing that then. You said another good point. It shouldn't just be parents. It needs to be beyond that. All people.
It has to be a cross-section of the stakeholders. And a cross-section of stakeholders are people that both have students in the district and people that don't.
Those are kind of the big things that I caught. If I missed anything, let me know, because the committee then can really work on this and come up with better. I do want to clarify something. If there was a $583,000 surplus, it's new to us board, that's why you saw some looks. Let's talk later about where you saw that and let's work with that.
Be glad to show you the email we got from the district.
That'd be great, because we didn't see that.
I'm not disputing the surplus. I'm disputing that it was put directly in Fund 41.
I didn't suggest it was. I said there was a surplus. I had no idea where it was. It literally got-
Well, we want to clarify that.
I don't know where, I'm just telling you I know what the surplus was in New York. A little clarification for you, so we can go forward. There's 12,000, approximately 12,000 voting numbers in this district. Less than 3,000 are parents. And 9,000 are taxpayers without kids, but when they had kids or don't have kids yet. So the district is made up of one quarter of parents within the district. The rest of the district is made up of non-parents. So that's something to take into consideration when you look at the numbers and how you come up with your cross-section.
That's pretty typical, cross the 50. Absolutely. Okay, so other, you know, there was someone else that said, someone said that- We'll come back. Okay, other comments?
I just want to mention at one point, when you guys were on the board, there was some discussion about Gales Corners Elementary, and there was some discussion about whether it made sense to, and this was, you know, something that resonated with me, whether it made sense to put money in an old school. That was a comment that was said when you guys were on the board. And so, you know, like moving forward, that was something that resonated with me, like, does it make sense to keep putting money in an old school? Or would it be, you know, you know, more looking forward to do something more comprehensive and, and build a new school? So I just, I mean, I just wanted to, you know, want to clarify, but that, that is another train of thought of, does it always make sense to put money into preserving?
I mean, we, we had a lot of discussions about that.
So I mean, we can't, I mean, we can do it that way, you know? I mean, obviously, I think that's the direction the board will need to go, the future board will need to go. But there was discussion about whether it makes sense to put money into an old building, of course, an old building. I'm not saying the whole building is old. And I, I know exactly which things were. I mean, I sat in all the places.
We had a lot of discussions about, you know, on campus here and selling that facility. There was a lot of-
Yes.
And that would be my point. We talked about shared services with other districts, the swimming pool performance. And I remember when I left the board, I challenged the board to think creatively and outside the box.
Excuse me, may I ask you a question about the pool, because I really don't really answer this? When I turned the facility, and of course, I had to go through the ladies locker room, because I couldn't go through the other. But I saw the seats upstairs, and I said, well, what are those upstairs? Well, evidently, that must have at one time been a gallery for people who wanted to look at the swimming pool. Well, how did they ever get up there before? They can't get up there now. Was that before there was a wrestling gym?
I wonder if you ever get them. Is this a man question?
The space, this, this is my question. Man, partially, there's a ground. The space is relatively unchanged from when it was originally constructed. The bleachers that are up there now, that are no longer usable, are just sitting in place. And that, that's what you're seeing when you look up there. There's been, there's been no changes to that space since it was originally built. There's been a wrestling room, auxiliary gym for physical ed in, in the community. And then it's also served as a, used to serve as a swimming pool.
So will people see where people would want to go to see people swimming?
Right now, they could go on the pool deck. We put chairs out around the pool deck.
Okay. And you don't want to change that? Where are you going to put the people?
I wonder what the proposal was.
Well, we would like to change it. In the, in the, in the proposal that was just put forward, we had planned on opening that space up.
What space?
The space you were referring to, where the scene-
Yeah, the second floor.
That would be opened up into the nav tarmac as, as one space, so that when you're viewing the pool from up there, you'd be in the space.
Okay.
Watching, versus on the pool deck.
I understood that, but the person who was touring said, we want to take out the windows and we want it to be open. And you're saying, we want it to be open? What's going to happen with the humidity and the heat from the pool?
We had a planned place to put in some, some rolling doors that we put down during the day, and then for meets and whatnot, when it was time of previewing, we opened those up to the space.
And then, and then to get the people to, to get up there, you have to pay part of the wrestling gym or-
No, I mean, we were just, we would have just had the mats offset, we would have walked in, just like we would normally do right now. We weren't putting, we weren't planning on putting in new interior walls or anything. Though some of those were, some of those options we talked about early on. But then as we vetted that space, we realized we needed a wrestling room that meets full capacity for physical ed and for athletics. So we kind of started changing that space. So the space would have really remained unchanged, except for some movable bleachers that we removed in the space for some reason.
And why wouldn't a new liner? When you take out the old liner, because you have a concrete pool there.
It's an aluminum pool, aluminum with-
Oh, it's an aluminum pool?
It's aluminum with a liner on it. It's a Chester pool, a Seabird chill pool. And so the reason why we have to make a large change here is because there's no functioning bottom drain. So if, when the liner does need replacement, we're going to have to put a functioning bottom drain in. Unfortunately, that's going to mean digging up the pool from the deepest end of the pool back into the animal room. So that's going to, you know, disturb the whole pool.
Are you saying the pool is absolutely no way to repair it? I'm not talking about eight lanes. I'm not talking about death. I'm talking about-
Again, we need, you need to talk about this. And I don't think we can resolve all those issues right in tonight. That's a good-
It's a valid, it's a valid question, I think. She just-
I don't answer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So is there no way to repair the pool?
Right.
Well, when, when the liner does need to be replaced, we will have to replace the bottom drain. Because the pool is, we're, we're in a, we have a variance with the state that allows us to operate the way we're operating. So if the liner ever did have to be done, we would have to dig up the pool anyways, to put that pipe in with the functioning bottom drain. At that time, it would only make sense to make the pool deep enough to come back to the source.
Because I think it's rather creative that you, that you made an agreement with Green Dale School and, and Greenfield School for these particular meets, because the pool is certainly used. You said you're using it 500 times a year. That's a very big expenditure you're talking about. The panels, it's terrible that you met that. But that should come out of operating money. I mean, if you were, if you were a nonprofit organization, a new grand capital campaign partners would be to replace panels. You would run that, and it could be part of it, if that wouldn't be the purpose of running that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Other comments? Not trying to cut off conversation, but just move it more to the right place, and we can really go deep on the issues. All right, other comments, questions? How about the board? Well, the other issue I thought of that I couldn't afford was open enrollment. Someone mentioned that we are getting kids from other districts. We do, we have lots of meetings about that, and the way we do it. Do we want to put that on as an agenda item, so we can have some discussion about that? Because I'm wondering now if people want us to continue with open enrollment. And I think there's confusion out there as to how we do it and why we do it. What do we do with that? We can, again, I think it just should be part of the discussion as we move forward with facilities, because that's a question on the table. It is. It is a question on the table.
We need kind of a simple solution to that. The old economic equation, marginal versus marginal cost. If, if our marginal cost to bring on over enrollment students exceeds what we get partly revenue from the other district, then it doesn't make sense.
Well, we've always done it in that way, so I'm confused for you. You would know how it's done.
I really think.
Tell us.
However, if you're filling a section that already exists by a couple of students here and there, then it makes sense.
Okay.
So you have to look at it from there.
Right, and that is how we do it? You do know that, right?
I don't think, being a resident, it does not have to be part of the capital improvement discussion. That's a separate discussion.
Okay. I wonder, because if we don't, that is how we do it. We don't do it in a way that a class district might, or we wouldn't do it. We do it in a way that makes sense to fill some seats per classroom, per grade level. We do it in a way that makes sense to fill some seats per classroom, per grade level. And I think we're going to be careful to move forward on that in that way. So that would not have to be a discussion that we have to have. According.
Except, except. The only thing you would, the only, it's not just marginal, but the only question you have then is you take the overall view. How many overall students you have versus the capacity of our schools as it sits today. If we took open enrollment away, what would be capacity usage or utilization within a building? Could you potentially move down just like it was 25 years ago? There were four elementarys in this school district, and you want to agree with that with two. If we're going to continue down a path of declining enrollment, which is, which has been happening, does it call for possi, the possibility of eliminating one more school and going down to one? I mean, these are part of, if you want to, if you want to, the economics or the functionality of how you do open enrollment, there's been a discussion for years and years and years. But the bigger picture is how many students versus how much it costs versus shouldn't. How much does that facility cost us? Do we need to have that facility? Could we do it some other way? And that part of your discussion would fall into the finance committee. The actual open enrollment selection or how many we need, that's your administration gives you those numbers based on what your response to them is or what your direction is to them. We're going to stay with four schools. We're going to do this. But the discussion should be had at the finance level is to, we're going to be really safe when we take these pieces away. And those, not specifics of open enrollment, but the overall should be brought down to that level.
I guess, I wanted to, that open enrollment is, as we all know, very tricky. And a lot of the open enrollment is to build in, it's not even, it doesn't really necessarily happen at the elementary level, because it's really at the middle school where you're trying to build the number. If we still want to continue to try to build our high school, the 200, to have the best selection of course offerings. Um, there is the philosophy of, that we've all discussed, everybody's been on board, of, if we can bring them in earlier at the elementary level, if we know, you know, we know we're going to build, try to build at middle school to build up to the high school. Um, because it's extra high school where we're having the lowest, you know, you know, compliance enrollment more than the elementary. Is bring them in at the earliest level so that they can be educated up to the, you know, up to the, to the level. Um, but really, it's tricky, you know? I mean, I've, I've sat on the board. But it's not, the biggest numbers are not at the element, the biggest numbers are not at the elementary level. It's when we get into the middle school and we're trying to build to the 200 at the high school. Um, that we, we have seen the biggest taken in more in the last two years at the, at the middle school than at the elementary.
Well, at the elementary level, you have 100 and 380 enrollment students and a resident population of 841. Which puts you someplace between 16 and 18 percent. But it isn't just that. You're talking here about number of teachers. If you're saying, what is your ideal student ratio? Maybe you're at 16, and so you're keeping that number to keep it at 16. So if you picked a certain level and say, based on the last experience of so many years, this is how many children we have that come through school. And we want to have 16 or 15 children per class. Therefore, we need this many teachers and this. You might add a little more, and one of the complaints is you don't have enough room in the elementary school now. You had a lot more. And you do not get 100 percent back. You get about 80 percent maybe.
At the high school level, we wanted more students than we wanted at the elementary level. So you have to build up to that.
Clarify your point about 80 percent versus 100 percent.
Because if you had a 220 student, you would get 100 percent reimbursement. But if you get, if you have an open enrollment student, uh, the state will tell you nice new figures for this district of any place from 8,800 to 97. And the amount that you get reimbursed for that student is probably any place from 6,055 to 7. I can't get exact figures. Uh, Mr. Odey could probably give it to you.
So you're suggesting it's quantitative.
I think you can tell how much, how much the state pays back for all these enrollment students.
It's me over here.
Do you want to speak to that, PJ?
My right to do the tour, I guess.
It doesn't work that way.
Well, that's just a topic. I mean, I think we need, it is part of the equation. It is part of the equation, should be looked at.
It should be, but as part of, as a former treasurer, you know it doesn't work that way.
I, you know what? And you're right, Glenn. I know exactly how it works.
Right.
But Stephanie, this is where you should step up and explain to her exactly how it works. But this is not a venue to himself. I wish he would keep it quiet, allow us to take notes. That belongs to the committee group.
Okay.
But that's how it works. But Stephanie will have that answer.
Yeah, let's, we do, do need to put it on the table then. I thought so. It's not something we can do. And clarify, so we all are on the same page on how it really works, all right?
I have a question. Bernie, you asked, do we have any questions on WTF? I do. Between the time that we got the survey results back and we put them to, uh, make a decision to, uh, have put on a ballot, there were several meetings, open meetings here, that we had people on the agenda where people could come talk to us. And if you guys are so adamant against it, why didn't you come then and give us your information at that time?
I mean, why are the numbers catching? You heard 18 million, you heard 16 million, 18 million, all of a sudden, one referendum was approved by the board, which would lead to 70. It was up to 22.5 plus 6.5. So the numbers kept changing and didn't know where it was. Already, when you got up to that number, I, I personally didn't need to attend any meetings, because I knew the position I was taking.
But, but I would, I would appreciate it. And we have some very strong opinions, as do you, to come and tell us that. We had, there was at least three, if not four, meetings that were open to people come up and talk. And all I can remember is one, one couple, one elderly couple voted, talking against it. So what are we to think? We, we went by a survey, we put a survey out, we, we went, we mimicked that survey as to what we put on the ballot. So I guess what I'm asking is, you've got input, you've got knowledge, please bring it. I mean, you know more open enrollment than I do. So please, of course, please, because when, when that was on the agenda, please come, come and share.
I was here meeting when John Jones was here. And at that time, he had said, uh, he was, he couldn't make up his mind. But as long as he was told that Trinamal would cost as much as it was new, he would, he would vote for new. And that's when the board, when the board unanimously said, okay, they were going to refer it. And I unanimously said, okay, then I'm going to be doing something about this too. I'm going to be coming after it and I'm going to say, what, who did you hear people?
You, you were the couple that was here, right?
I was not part of the couple.
Okay. There was a, there was a.
Well, I was a couple of, but no. Yeah, my husband was with me, but I don't recall him. An elderly couple. Fuck.
But you were that per, you were the person that was here, right?
I was at one of the meetings that John was at.
Right. But what, but what you did though, but you didn't say what you just said now. You left. You left in the middle of the meeting. Am I correct?
I know, but you said you were approving, that's right.
But there was still, right. And, and, but you never came back. And, and, but we need your input.
Why wouldn't you come back?
Yeah.
Why would the board vote at 70 to go for it? Why wouldn't you come back? At that point, maybe.
But there was, there was meetings prior to that. All I'm asking you is, you've got great information, you've done your homework, come give it to us.
You didn't turn it out until you told me you were going to toss all this money. Because my husband and I looked at each other and said, don't you pass this render for 30 bucks? We're out of here. That's it. That's it. And I didn't mean this meeting out of here. I'm in out of the middle of the school district. Come on.
All I'm asking is, come give us your input.
A lot of people told us anyway.
Yeah, I, I, okay, we, um.
Can I just dovetail? You delight so heavily in a survey that I have some of my ideas that run around to a better than actual, to this thing, to this report. Because the way you phrased your question, you would vote probably yes. What does probably yes mean? 50 percent, 40 percent? That's strategic. You can make a survey result skewed to any way you want by the way you asked the question. Though, the beautiful thing, and I, and I'm glad, actually now, in hindsight, that it did go to our front. Because it forced people like us to get out in the community, put boots on the ground, and talk to the people in the stakeholders that did not have necessarily students in the district. And when we did that, and like I can tell you, we probably passed on 4,000 flyers, door to door, not mailbox to mailbox, you know? And we talked to a lot of people and it was very enlightening. Because these are the stakeholders that you know, when I shared that with you, you can't get people to these meetings. It's very, very difficult. Okay? So when we, when we walked and talked to the stakeholders and the committee members, we found out, wow, this is really enlightening. And when you look at your survey results versus the way the vote came back, it actually solidified that the survey was flawed. Because it was such an overwhelming defeat. And nobody, somebody said we were celebrating, nobody celebrated, believed. We never considered it a celebration. Preserve and prove, that's all we want to do and we're thinking for in a, in a partnership of that.
And I want to clarify something. I appreciate a different view of those survey questions. It was not our intent, it was not our intent. This is what we want. Now, how can we put a survey together to get us what we want? That was not our intent. It may look that way, but that is not what we did. We just, we counted on, so relied on some people to give us, how can we get the data that we want? We didn't do that intentionally to get the answer. We did it.
And actually, I kind of sat with David and some other people on that survey. And I mean, it was kind of like, you know, you need to put on there exactly what this dollar amount is going to cost tech. I mean, that, you know, we really had these discussions about being as transparent as possible. It was not worded one way or, or the other to.
Not intentionally.
Not intentionally. It really wasn't. And the intent was with the survey is, you know, we knew that, you know, as a board, and I know as a parent, I'm getting input from parents with kids. And the intent was that the survey would go out to the whole, you know, the whole community. We did have feedback that was diverse. Um, I don't have those numbers with me, but we, you know, we did have a cross-section of population. We really did receive a cross-section of population. And that survey was designed to be as, really was designed to be as transparent as possible. It really was. I sat there with the numbers and people were saying. And we, and people even had commented to us that we're really almost giving too much information. But it was really true, get feedback. Um, and it wasn't slated one way or the other, but this would pass. It really wasn't, you know? We knew when we were going out there, we were asking for a lot of money. We didn't know if it would pass or not. But we, you know, we sent it out to the community for the community to listen to. It's too much. The community is not going to support that dollar amount. You know, we know that. Um, and we did, you know, if I look at some of the other referendums that go out there, they don't pass by, uh, resounding percentages. You know, sometimes they pass at 51 percent. So you don't know until you literally go out to referendum and get a true vote, because everybody has, yeah. You know, and the survey was also an opportunity for everybody to give input. But that's okay. The referendum passed, it's not, it's not the first referendum that didn't pass. We come up with Plan B and go out to the community with Plan B. It's not the end of the world. We just need to address some issues.
Nancy, Andy. Um, I think you would agree, we need to reach out to more people, and even the people that are here tonight, to get good feedback, correct? Because like you said, we really need to reach a broad cross-section. So one of my directions to the committee is that we find ways to get back out and listen to the lines and the growing reason. Not quite different door, but neighborhood, little neighborhood groups would be great, but I don't know that we can even get there. But it would really be helpful. I think the committee should talk about when we do, what would that agenda look like? What information are we getting? And again, if we have a smaller group that's sort of working with the stuff, with the facility committee that can help fashion your questions, so we don't get the feedback again while you set the question, the answers you want. We don't want that. Now this is about.
When you start identifying potential, you know, committee members and members of the committee, think of what expertise you need on that committee.
That's true.
You know, whether it's a teenager or a space buyer or whatever. Think of the people that I know are resources. My neighbor Mickey Wood, you know, he's a huge developer, apartments and, I mean, I talk to him almost every other day. Mark Leonard, one of the biggest developers in this area. He's your neighbor over here. Our neighbor, I should say, over here. You know, we had him on the previous committee. He provided great expertise. They may not make every meeting, but they can provide that insight. So look at the resources we have currently in, in the community and what you're looking for from the skill set. The only thing I would add to that is, if, what could show us all that kind of stuff in life? It really is kind of important for the members to draw foster relationships with the community people, not just the parents. Reach out to community people. When we were on the board, and after we were back to opening the podcast, the engagement was not just parents. It was business people, it was taxpayers, it was retired people, it was new people coming to the district. We went out and searched them, engaged them, said, you ever have an issue, you have an advocate to bring to you. Um, and my question I oppose to you is I'd like to see your information other than the survey that says we want to rebuild Hales Corners. I want to, because we've had plenty of discussions on the board. That wasn't the main focus. Where from that point until now, did it become, we're going to tear it down and rip it up? Who gave you that direction other than the survey? If you based everything on that survey, there's your mistake. You take it outside of that. In the future, don't use the survey. Use the community engagement. Have them come to you. Those are the things that are different then till now. And if you want to get back to that point of where you have community involvement, the community engagement, and where they're willing to spend money, that's one of the recommendations I give you, is engage them.
I want to, I want to make sure we're really giving the committee a clear voice. So if any board member disagrees with this, please speak up now. But I think you've given us great feedback. I think we're all in agreement. But what the, the moving forward piece, it looks like this. With broad-based group working with the financial facility committee, with representation that includes the representative groups in our community as well as skills staff, that we might need, that, that help us move forward. Let's just stop there. Is everyone in agreement that we can do that? Does anyone have a problem with that? It's going to get debatable about who, but we don't need to talk about that yet. Right? Is that okay?
Yep.
All right? And I mean, it's how big and all of that stuff. What, do you want to say something? I do. What?
Would you mind if I did? Talking about the committee process for just a second?
No, I don't want to.
You don't say?
I didn't come up.
Don't get confused.
Excuse me.
Okay. Kid Galish, I'm sending you an architect. Um, so I've said the last 15 years, helping school districts go through referendum process with community engagement as the driver, with meaningful, sincere community engagement as the driver. And every process is a little different. It's based on what you need, it's based on timing, it's based on where you are in the process, when we start. So the one thing I can say when I'm hearing, and I support the concept of a community-based committee very highly, but I want to make sure that you're thinking about how that committee is selected and the message that it sends. If you are in any way, shape, or form handpicking people. Because it doesn't matter who is handpicking them. If the perception is you're picking them, WTF is picking them, the parents are picking them.
I've got it. Can we, can I hear another point?
My point is that we want to look for a broad outreach, which involves an open invitation, that also involves outreach to key community constituents.
Anyone who disagrees with that, we should maybe have a more open process.
I think, I think you're there. I just want, there is a nuance there I wanted to stress.
We got it. Thank you. All right. So we all agreed on that, we're moving forward. Nope. Not a, yes, you.
Yes, okay. I just, I just wanted to say something. Maybe, maybe it's all too complicated here. Maybe it's all simpler than all of this. The flyer that went out that turned out the results that you all got, not only said one thing. It said, this is how much it's going to cost you. All these people who voted against your referendum weren't thinking, they looked and they saw that down and they went, yep, I'm looking at that. Now, probably 80 percent of the school districts' expenses are in the salaries. Now, probably 80 percent of the school district's expenses are in the salaries. So I think you do have to look at what was said, look at half ten, and see at how you can preserve some money. I also think you do have to look at open enrollment. I, if, if you have 140 kids coming into your, to your elementary school every year, and it's 140, 140, I think you can say, you know what? I think we got 140 kids coming to this school.
I think that's on the table.
Okay, well, that's good. But just, but think of it, and look at it that way. Suddenly, 20 more, 20 more are going to come in. And can't have room for that room.
We've got it.
Okay, because this open enrollment queue looks out.
We've got it. So I'll get to that next. In terms of the committee's work, I think you got to start with, also, we kind of get mixed in our conversation here to solutions, but before we even talk solutions, whether we need a new high school, whether we need a new ACE or not. No, sorry.
That's what I'm going to mention.
Yeah.
You said future. You said future. Oh, not that part. Back to what I meant to say was that we would agree on what those needs are first. I think, I think, I'm uncomfortable with saying that the solution is, and everything has to be done within the current budget. I think we should really agree, I don't agree with putting that out as a parameter. I hope you get comfortable with that, because I...
So are you suggesting that the needs identification be made by the board?
No, no, by this committee. So start with this broad-based group. We have to have community agreement. We have to have the community agree on whether or not any of these are even needs or are they really wants. Did this board really say, you know, we were really wanting something that we don't need? I mean, and I, we have to be humble about that. If that's what we did, then we can't do that again. So I'm suggesting that the second step of the committee process, including the subcommittee after we get the right people on the bus and all that stuff, is to, um, look at a broader-based way of finding that out. So is that, is everyone in agreement with that? Let's not get to solutions yet. Let's not do that. Let's not hang tight ourselves at this point. We'd be rather to take the list, get that list back up and running that we looked at, and say, this is what we think is important to this community, to these people, on the list that we looked at of needs, the pool, in other words. Is it really a, a need or a want? And have that conversation broader than we did. Is Hills Corners, what are the real issues at that school? We're not getting into that tonight. And what are not? And that's what the committee, with the financial facility committee would do. Is that a step? Didn't that make sense? That would be the first two steps. And that's all I think I can take up tonight.
I just want to say that the pool, it's been discussed for three years since I've been on the board. You're always going to have people who think it's a need, and you're going to have people that think it's a want. You know, and we've listened to both sides, and I don't know how else we were going to decide that one. And that was one of the things, iffy, whether we should put it out to referendum, you know? But I don't, you know, I don't know how you sell, you know, it seems there are more needs and ones that we could have, we probably need to discuss. But as far as the pool, it's, some people view it as a need, some people view it as a want, and it's pretty much half and half in this committee. So other than going to referendum, I don't know how you, how you, you could address that much.
I agree with that.
Maybe you would prefer to explore shared services for the pool?
Um, I actually had to, I had called, um...
How many, how many other districts did you call?
I actually only called one. Yeah, I called Greenfield to see if that, because that was most obvious, um, they were not for which in Greendale. Um, and Greenfield is at capacity between, um, the, the communities and the fact that they've already combined with Greendale, I believe, highest for their swim team. And so I was told that to put practice time or whatever for, for what, teams would not, would not be available. And then Greendale, which was in our department, new group, um, as well, doesn't help too much because they're not shared. So did I survey every, every surrounding community? No. And I know Franklin just went through where they did, I did talk to somebody from Franklin's board. Um, they did recently bring their pool up to WI.
I think I'm wrong. I think I'm wrong.
So I also think there's a comment of keeping, um, in the loop of this conversation, the normal budget process and what are we doing with that, and open enrollment. Because those are issues that are very near and dear to some of your hearts. They are ours, obviously, because that's how we make our decisions. But if there's a better way, we can do what we're doing, that's got to go along with this process, let's do it. Did that make sense? So that's what I'm hearing. Did I miss anything?
Nope.
You're good?
So we're going to start with the meeting on the twentieth?
Next. Well, you're meeting, and we can start.
Typically, I don't have any injections to that, except for the committee having the word coming in and that one, we can exclude.
Well, everybody's doing what counts.
And we should put a call right now to people interested in survey, right? I don't see why these people couldn't submit their names and their resumes. Okay, you do not have that. But their names and their area of interest, and maybe some expertise if they want to, they don't have to. But why don't we put out a call for that right away and start forwarding goes to, uh, Dr. Holt, correct?
I suggest you put that on the website also.
Nice, sure. That's a good idea. And then the numbers.
Yes, but we also need to get, not everybody that you stated.
You have to have a control. If you have 30 people, you're going to have to ask.
Well, I mean, but, but not all residents look at the website, so we would need to do a mirror or something to all of the community that we don't have, because we have community, communication book that we have. So we do need to do the 9,000 other people that are there.
Absolutely. I plan to. Put it in the mountains paper.
Good. Very good.
Get it, get it.
This came out about a month ago.
Yeah, we just had to just like go on, see if we're missing a week.
Dave? When is the next newsletter scheduled to go out?
Um, whenever I put it together.
We just sent one out, so what?
Yes, I would, no, I was actually hoping to get one out, um, in early, early May. I was so eager about it. But that deadline is rather quick, so.
If they, if, if you can delay, if you can delay the newsletter till the middle of, end of May, give us a chance to actually have a clear conversation outside of just the night about what we wanted, what we're looking for, through committees and board meeting, and then have something concrete to go with, instead of, well, let's get 50 names and...
Exactly.
...just talking through.
Talk to the more facility and plans committee at the next meeting.
Or are we going to have a timer for it, or are we going to...
Yeah, I think I'm back to the looking. Um, not very, I'm still waiting some of that, I don't see that coming right now, so that's kind of it.
It's all budgetary stuff?
Um, right now, I have all the sex stuff. Right now, I'm here, so then I'll have some budget things on there.
Well, I think we need to make it a priority.
We can do that, yeah. All right, it's something about exploring absolute instructor stuff. Yes, yes. Let's have more about it. Absolutely. All right?